Okay, I have seven o'clock, so we'd like to start on time here. So with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And first order, I'd like to welcome all of you. We have some students from Mount Westonka with us this evening, so welcome. I hope you stay for the duration of our meeting. And also, welcome all of you that are here this evening. First order, I'd like, just a friendly reminder, please turn off all your electronic devices, or your cellphones, or put them on airplane mode, silence, whatever, so they don't disrupt the meeting. And then also, before we get started, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, welcome, and all of those watching on YouTube later on as well. Glad you could join us. First order, I'd like to make some introductions. So I am Lisa Whalen, I am the mayor. And to my left are council members Patricia Thol, Pam Mortensen, Michael Molliter, Shannon Bruce, and on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Paul Hornby. And then our city clerk is Chris Lindquist, and next to her, we have our director of administration, Cassandra Tabor. And then to my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone, our finance director, Brian Grimm, our community development director, David Abel, and then our attorney, Ron Beatty, who is with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, we have our police chief, Paul Falls. So with that, we have the amended agenda, and this is slightly amended from what was in the packet. We have special presentations, and then consent agendas, and I'll read those later on. And then we have our public hearings, which is our fee schedule, and ordinance publication, and then business items, budget approvals, and then administrative items and council reports. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
No move.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was a tie. I'm gonna give it to Ms. Thol this time. Ms. Mortensen made the motion, and Ms. Thol seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So tonight, we have special presentation. This is going to be our budget presentation and budget overview, and then we're also gonna open it up for the public. If you have questions or care to make comments, we'll give you some time to do that. So first, I'm gonna hand it to Mr. Barone.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, and welcome to everybody's here. I see a lot of new faces, so I'm glad you're here tonight and participating in our discussion. I'm sure most of you here are probably for the budget. So I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss Minnetrista's budget and our budget process, just to give you a little baseline here on how to react to what you see tonight. We start our process in July, staff does, and eventually, we bring a preliminary budget to the city council in September for approval, and then we get to the final budget approval, which has to be done by statute for a date in December, and since generally, our council meets just once in December, tonight's the night. So I wanna give some information, so you don't rely on maybe some less than accurate information on how to assess how we manage our city and our budget. So there are things that we do, and there are things that we don't do when we're looking at our budget. And a couple of things that we don't do is, we don't tie our final budget to what the final tax rate may end up being. We just don't do that. Nor do we look at what other cities do. We like that information. It's good to know what other cities are doing, but we don't directly base our budget on what other cities do. We also don't look at the rate of growth that takes place here. That's a factor, of course, but that's not how we set our budget. What we try to do is focus on what's important. You'll see a PowerPoint presentation by Brian Grimm, our finance director, in a few minutes after I'm done talking. And you'll see these four things, and this is what's important for us, as we try to set our budget each year. What we try to do is four things. First one is try to ensure the city's financial stability. We try to address, the second one is we try to address our capital improvement and our infrastructure needs. The third one is we try to monitor our staffing and benefit levels to match our service levels. And the fourth one is we try to continue funding the pavement management plan. And so I'll just give you a couple of examples of each one, and what's happened here. So when we're managing, trying to ensure that we have a financially stable city, the city of Minnetrista has been rated as an AA+ city for many years. And our finance department, under Brian's leadership, we've achieved the CAF award, I'm sure I'm gonna get the number wrong, but I wanna say 12 or 13 years?
Maybe 14.
14 years. 14 years in a row, which is excellence in financial accounting and reporting. So we've, as a city, have received that award for many years in a row. We have a very healthy budget reserve that helps us when we're doing our budget. We have done in years past and are doing this year to help bind down a potential tax increase to our residents by using some of that budget reserve. And just so people know, and you'll see this in the PowerPoint, that our budget as proposed in 2018 is still less than what it was in 2010. And I don't know, too many things that haven't changed in price are gone down in the last eight or nine years. As far as capital items, we've done a number of large infrastructure projects over the last couple of years. We've done numerous road projects. One that I can think of off the top of my head is the Halsted Drive project. It's not quite done, it will be finished next year, but it's done for the season. But probably the most noteworthy project that we've done over the last few years is to implement and build two small water treatment plants, so we can supply treated water to our water users. It also connected a couple of sections of town with a water main project, so that's again, under the capital improvement and infrastructure needs. We've tried to monitor our staffing and benefits level to match our service needs. We have added a few lines of business at the city in the last few years. Two of them are our building inspections area, and then also being a participant in the West Metro Drug Task Force. So the building inspections area was something that we used to contract with. We brought forward a proposal to the council a couple of years ago, to say, I think we can hire our own and do a better job internally. Maybe not save a whole heck of a lot of money, but we'd probably provide a whole lot more customer service and better turnaround time for our residents. So they gave us the go-ahead to do that, and it's been a big success. And as I touched on a second ago, we are now members again of the West Metro Drug Task Force, and I know Chief Falls would be able to say that that's been a huge success. I don't know if I can completely quantify that success, because it's hard to do when you're trying to track down bad guys selling drugs in the city, but it has been a success. And then the final item is to fund the pavement management program. We had a roads committee that concluded its work a few years ago, and one of their recommendations that the city council, the city council and previous city councils have bought into is the idea of ratcheting the amount of city dollars that goes towards our road maintenance, and we're slated to increase our road maintenance funds another $100,000. I think we're at $350,000. The goal is to get it up to about $900,000 per year, and that's based on our pavement management plan, to make sure that our roads are in good condition going forward. They're not gonna be 100% ideal condition, but they're in good condition. So when you watch the PowerPoint that you're about to see from Mr. Grimm, just keep in mind that as a group, the city council and the city staff, we work on creating a budget each year to try to satisfy those four important areas that I just talked about. There's always gonna be competing priorities for our budget dollars. Many of the people on city staff up here seated will tell you that we really like working here at the city of Minnetrista. It's always a challenge, and it's a pretty good challenge, to try to make sure that we provide services that are cost-effective and acceptable to our public. And we completely understand that there's not a pot of gold at an end of a rainbow in which to find money to fund all these things. Just on personal note, I've worked in the public sector for about 25 years, and the one thing that I've told council members, not only in this city, when I've helped in their orientation when they're newly elected, but at my previous city, when I worked at the city of Inbury, is an orientation for council members, and the most important piece of advice that I give them is, plan for the future of the city. That's your job as a council member. It's our job as a staff member, but that's your job as a council member. It's very easy to come up with a one-year fix, but someday, they won't be on the council, someday, these people won't be on city staff, but the cities will still be here, and it's our job to make sure that we're ensuring the future of Minnetrista. So with that, I will turn it over to Brian, and he can go through our PowerPoint, his PowerPoint presentation about our budget for 2018. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike, and Madam Mayor, members of the council. I know you saw snippets of this during our work session, but I'll try not to be too lengthy or too dry here, but I'll go ahead and start on the presentation here. See, the recommended action for council tonight is to adopt, while we're all here, is a final tax levy to approve by resolution by the end of the month, as Mike stated here with our last meeting in the month today. Sort of a timeline, so we met, as Mike referenced, as a staff level, you know, we are looking at the budget in obviously June, July already, and we met with the city council on August 7th and the 21st to review that budget presentation and take feedback from the council and keep going, working on it. On September 5th, then, we certified the preliminary tax levy at a 5.43% increase. We went through the process of completing the final budget, had further discussions with the city council, and basically now, the staff is recommending a final levy of 4.35% levy increase from 2017. So about a, down about a percent from what was certified as that preliminary tax levy back in September. I think Mike stole my thunder here, right? These are the four goals already, so I won't, you know, read them again, you know, obviously about the financial stability, et cetera, on down, so we'll move ahead here. So this, it's always good to have an understanding of it, that there's multiple items that our tax levy goes for. The first item is our general fund levy, that's for all, you know, our general operations, police, public works, and that type of, I guess, those type of services. And what you'll see there is our levies actually going down a little bit from 2017 to 2018, proposed by about $35,000. Our debt levy is going up, and that's mainly to cover, as Mike referenced earlier, the Halsted Drive project, and the Enchanted Lane, that one was done this year, and then we also have some equipment certificates we're doing to fund some capital equipment. Next line item is that road maintenance going from $250,000 to $350,000, so that's where we're trying to ramp up for the, to fund that pavement management plan. So you can see those, when you add those three up, I guess one other item, we used to do a cash levy for our capital equipment. That sort of went away over the years. At some point, that could come back, but it's not included in this year's levy. So you have a total levy of $4,473,650. You get some dollars from the county back through fiscal disparities, and the total net levy comes to $4,354,687. This is our capital improvement projects, or our capital equipment purchases over the years. You can see, for 2018, we're looking at purchasing about a little under $300,000 worth of equipment. That's squad cars, that's equipment for public works, et cetera, and that's being funded through that earlier mentioned equipment certificate. This is a chart that gives a little bit of a history as far as our tax levy the last several years. You can see it was flat for a couple of years, and then there's been some small inflationary increases the last few years. We have tried to use, as Mike referenced earlier, some of our general fund reserves to be able to help keep our levy at more of a 2%, 3%, 4% increase over the last few years, as well as funding that additional pavement management plan dollars, and, you know, and so making those investments, and trying to keep, this is our percent that we spend on, a percent of our general fund balance in comparison to what we actually budget to spend in our general fund for expenditures. Wanted to highlight with this chart, so if you took a property that was valued around $500,000 back in 2010, you could see, they're actually paying less, and this was referenced earlier also, than what, even with the 2018 budget. You can see, we had some pretty substantial decreases back in 2011 and 2012, where, you know, properties were seeing their city taxes go down, you know, $150,000, $200,000, you know, on this, you know, the type of, you know, sort of average value property, that $450,000, $500,000 property. So, you know, I, you know, you're not gonna see, I mean, this is probably more, what do you call, sustainable than, you know, these were some pretty harsh cuts that were done back in the 10, 11, 12 area, but, you know, most people, if they've been living here the last eight years, they're paying less in taxes than they were back in 2010. This will be more of a year-to-year comparison, so you can see, we basically had 7% of new val, or valuation increase in the city, and about half of that was from new homes or new growth, and half was on existing properties. So if you take tax impact to a home that had about a 3.5% valuation increase, using that 4.35% levy increase, that's projected with the tax rate of 25.73, you can see there's real minimal difference between the 2017 and 2018 taxes for those properties. You know, knowing that some people had a, you know, higher-than-average increase to their valuation, say they had a 7% valuation increase, you can see those people had, you know, maybe a $30 to $100 increase based on the level of their property, and that's something that, you know, really, the county assessor does your valuation, we don't control that, that's, we can set the levy, and then the property tax formula basically parcels it out based on what your valuation is for the current tax year. On the flip side, we had some properties that pretty much stayed the same, and if your property stayed pretty close to the same in value from over year to year, we had, you'll see, the city portion of your taxes went down by about that same amount, or whatever that was shown on the previous slide. So, you know, a lot of it, there's gonna be winners and losers each year, you know, even if we keep our city levy flat at zero, there's gonna be people that see increases, there's gonna be people that see decreases. It's, you know, just the way the property tax system's structured, all we can do, as Mike mentioned earlier, is set our levy based on the needs of the city, so. Like Tony's point out, remind, we are only basically 20% to 25% of your tax bill, so when you're paying, you know, on a median value property in 2017, it was about $435,000, you're paying, you know, roughly $4,800 in your city, school, county taxes. We get basically $1,100, $1,150 of that, so, you know, we control this piece of the pie. Everything else, you know, over, you know, starting there and going around, is what we can't control. So, you know, if we have, you know, a 4% increase, that's just to that portion there, that's, you know, that's not any of this other, of those other entities. Probably to sum up here, I think I've touched on some of these items, as far as the, through how we're funding our capital equipment for the year, the pavement management plan, and then also that the two major street projects that are, we have to levy for, for 2018 and Referenced earlier, we've had some, we've done the water treatment infrastructure projects in the 2017 street projects, so we've done some different, you know, internal transfers even, to try to keep our general tax, or overall tax levy down. And then we've also used fund reserve, or fund balance dollars of the $200,000 to $360,000 to try to keep the general levy basically flat, but only increasing for those capital projects, those street projects is basically what you're, why the city's seen the levy go up. In summary, so, you know, we'll be talking about during the business portion of the agenda, the actual approving the levy and the budget, and all the different financial management plans. And then, I guess, and just to reiterate, the increase that's proposed is down about a percent from September, the 4.35%, you know, majority of it's for roads, some capital equipment purchases, and then the general fund levy is actually going down a percent when you actually look at that piece of the levy as shown earlier. So I guess, if I'll stand for any questions for the council, and/or I guess, turn it over for public comment, I guess.
Well, we had a lengthy, very good discussion at our work session regarding the budget and levy, and if council wishes to make any comments at this time, otherwise, I'll open it up to the public, and people could come forward. Okay, so if you're here tonight, and you wish you have a question, or you have a comment, I open it up to you. You can come up, and we'll start on this side, and then go down the rows, and I'm asked that you come up to the podium, you do need to state your name and address. I'm gonna ask that you please be respectful, we are here to listen, and if you have questions, we will try and answer them for you, and also, just consider it of time, try and be succinct. So with that, we'll start on this side. Anybody in the first row here, for, in second row, any comments or questions? Mr. Segner?
Lawrence Segner, 4705 Rim Road, St. Bonin. I got this proposal, like you said, it changes, I was listening to your comments, mine went up 19.3% on the property, out of the value, and I was wondering why it was so high? Because I listened to your article, it shouldn't go more than about 5.4, like you had, and it went down to 4.35, maybe? Why go up so high in one year, 19.3%?
And that's the valuation that went up, yeah. And that, Mr. Grimm was pointing out, that the city council and staff doesn't do the valuations of the properties, that's done by the county assessor. And so that, the valuation of your property, if it goes up, is what's gonna drive your taxes as well. And if it went up more than the average of 3.5% or 4%, then you're also gonna see a little bit higher increase in your property taxes. The valuation, you should talk to the city assessor, the county assessor, Kevin Nguyen. I'm not sure what can be done this year for you in that regard.
I called him already, I gotta get him next spring.
I was gonna say, watch your mailbox and take a look at your valuation for next year. I think there actually is, that you can do something for this year, but you'd have to go through a huge, long process. But watch your mailbox, watch and see what it does for next year, and then talk to Mr. Nguyen about that.
Okay.
There should be mailings coming out, and then we have the open book processes in April, and that's where you talk about your valuation, in April, for the next year's.
So you should get a statement sometime in March, and then you can set up an appointment and talk to Mr. Nguyen, I think, sometime in April.
Is surrounding people went up too, do you know that?
Is the what?
Surrounding neighbors like me, where I live, did they go up too then?
I don't know.
He said my value went up, I don't, we didn't do nothing.
Yeah, I know, my value went up too, and I didn't do anything.
It don't go up $100 in one year.
It kinda depends, so what happens is, they do evaluations for all the homes, but they just use a modeling thing, and so not everybody's valuation is necessarily really accurate. But then what they do is, they have the city in quadrants, there's four sections or five sections of the city, and so they, every, so every five years, then that section is looked at closer. So if you happen to have been in that quadrant or that section that was looked at closer this year, that might account for some of that evaluation increase.
Otherwise, it's based on comparable sales, or arms-length sales, you know, the county looks at real estate sales and adjusts their valuation, and then they also, you know, I know there is some certain pockets that are going up, whether it's, you know, ag properties, and different ones that have gone up more, I mean, there's some that have gone up, some that have gone down based on different neighborhoods, different classification of property, et cetera, so.
And I think yours is ag, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, and see, and that's what has gone up, I'm not sure what's driving that, but ag property did go up.
Ag was going down, or that homestead, it went way down too.
Yeah, exclusion, or some of the different, yeah.
I think ag property did go up more so than other properties in the city. And again, what's driving that, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. Does that vary by county?
The ag?
Any, just property, the tax increases, would Hammond County be different than?
Values, the valuations?
Yeah.
I mean, it's any, that's assessors or appraisers, they're supposed to look at how things are selling in a market, you know, in the most current year's market, and then they have their formulas they use and stuff to be able to come up with, you know, accurate, as best as, you know, to their ability, valuations. So it really shouldn't matter between Hammond County, Carver County, et cetera, whatever.
Okay, anybody else in this third row now?
Is this the time to talk about Humpherson Crest?
No, we're gonna take those comments a little bit later. This is budget, but if you have budget questions, all right? Anybody else here? Hold on, just a second, Mr. Christians. Anybody else here have some questions or comments? Fourth row over here, anybody? Nobody? Okay, so we'll start in the back there, since you raised your hand, Mr. Christians, if you can come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Homeowner Home. Just a couple of things I'd like to point out pertaining to the budget. Brian, excellent job, except there's something I think that we should all be made aware of. I'm aware of it from obviously being on the council in the past, but when you take a look at the budget, because of the growth in the city, Woodland Cove, Red Oaks, Hurley Shores, all these areas, there's a tremendous amount of growth that has taken place in the city of Minnetrista, and therefore, there's additional dollars that have gone into the kitty, you might say, okay? So in terms of having a real dollar per homeowner, what it really affects in his pocketbook, correct me if I'm wrong, but if a budget was about 3%, there would be no increase whatsoever in the majority of the cases of the property owners like myself. If you want to clarify that for a second, so everybody understands, because of the growth that we've had, it doesn't have really a 4.5% increase.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So right here on this slide, so basically, the numbers we got from the county is, we had, for this tax year 18, I guess, to evaluation 17, we had 3.5% new growth and new improvements, so some people might have put a deck on there, and that, you know, gets put in there, so basically, you're spreading your tax levy over.
It's tens of a percent, is what you're really looking at.
Correct.
So if the budget was about 3.5, there would be absolutely no impact for a homeowner if.
If your valuation didn't change.
Well, that's on average, if you had that perfect valuation, you know, correct, yeah.
I mean, using that as a guideline, though, you basically, if it was 3.5%, you'd basically see no increase.
It'd be a wash.
Yeah, so on average, most people, if they had that.
And that's what I wanted to point out, because I think a lot of people don't understand.
You're correct, and so if your valuation went up slightly, or not at all, it could mean very little, or no, or please. Right, and right now, at the 4.35, you're correct, 0.8% essentially, because of the new growth.
Right, so I'm excited, I'm happy about the new growth, I'm excited about the new growth, because whenever I see new growth, I think, hey, that's gonna be less money out of my pocket, that I'm gonna have to pay to keep up with the inflation and things like that. I would love to see it remain at about the same rate as what our growth is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christians, okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Christians, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see, which one, there's been three of them in the last six days.
Current would be fine.
6440 Cedar Court, North Saunders, Minnetrista.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, or starting in the back there?
Hello, Tom Nash, I live at 1250 Martin View Drive, and I want to commend you for reducing it from what you were looking for earlier, I think that's a step in the right direction. The 5.43, that was excessive, considering that it's about 3.5%, I believe, increase as far as the number of residences, is that?
Just valuation, because I can see down.
Okay, so maybe it's even fewer residences than that, because property values did go up a little bit overall.
Well, our property value in general went up 7% in total, so 3.5% was existing, 3.5% was new.
Okay, got it, so that's for the new houses themselves.
Yeah, any improvements, new homes.
Got it, okay. And I'm happy to hear that you're gonna be putting more money into the road improvement, and I'm on one of the roads that needs a lot of work too, so I look forward to that, hopefully that can happen in the future. And I wasn't sure, is that, does that make up, I was just looking here, the difference, it's about a 24% spread here, if you take 4.35% divided by the 3.5%, you know, that, the number of properties that increased, it's about 24%. percent above that. And I was just wondering, is that all pretty much attributed a hundred K for the road improvement fund or no?
Well, you're saying the increase in the budget? Is that what you're asking?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, even that, that four point three five percent, I mean, the, the roads are, is a hundred thousand, but the Halsted Road and Enchanted Road is seventy-five thousand. It's basically, the roads is almost.
It's a good chunk of it.
About four percent.
Is the whole city budget, is it around like four and a half mil or somewhere in that neck?
Uh, for the general fund, I mean, yeah, about four and a half million, yeah. But, yeah, once, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the back row, next row? Okay, then, um, next, Mr. Cole?
Hi, Dave Cole, ten forty-five Duke Drive, um, Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for letting us speak tonight. Just a couple of observations and some questions. The reason I'm here tonight is I saw a posting on the internet by one of the council members suggesting that my taxes were gonna go up five, over five percent. Clearly, that was inaccurate, I thought it was maybe a bit misleading as well. And I was disappointed to see an elected official posting that kind of information rather than letting the staff give the whole picture.
Do you have a comment on the budget?
I do. Um, it's related to that. So, um, I probably represent that median value. My value went at three point four percent, my value's about the median. But my taxes are only going up two percent. And so I think what I'm here to do is, is first of all, commend you and your staff for putting together what seemed to be a very reasonable budget, but you clearly have a hole you need to dig out of, as we saw with some of the graphs. My question is this, if any of you are against this levy as it currently is being proposed, I would like you to identify which road projects you're not going to do. Because it seems from the presentation, it's road projects that are driving this, in my case, two percent increase versus zero. And as much as I'd like to see a zero percent increase, I just, that's not realistic, that's not even inflation, and so I'm certainly willing to live with the twenty-three dollar increase that I'm gonna pay. It's really not very much money. But if you're not going to approve that, which, you know, certainly you want to have a vigorous discussion about that, I think it would only be fair to identify which roads aren't going to be improved, just so we know. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. Anybody else in that row?
Mayor, if I could make a comment, please?
Okay, real quickly, because I don't want to get this, I don't want this to be a battle.
No, and it won't be. I, I'm the council member that posted the comment on social media, and it was very clear that I, that the city council had proposed a five point four three levy increase, and nowhere did I say the people's taxes were going up full five point four three percent. That is inaccurate, and it was not misleading.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in that row wishing to make a comment? Otherwise, we'll move to the next row. Mr. Pettis, you had your hand up?
Gary Pettis, I live at sixty-two hundred County Road twenty-six. And I'd like people to understand, because a lot of people don't know, that we don't have any industry in Minnetonka.
That's correct, very little.
We live totally on property tax.
On residential.
Residential property tax, okay? And, and the whole budget word is, I think you folks have done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
I, I understand what we're still lacking and what we need to do for roads, but I understand also that we have a plan for it, and hopefully, growth in the city because of decent roads will allow us to get to that place a little sooner than, than you anticipate.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anybody else in that row wanting to make a comment, have questions? Okay, and then we have the first row, students, any questions? All right, all right. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium, so I'm going to close the public hearing now. And that does conclude our presentation and, and our comments. Mr. Donahue?
Is my name on the list?
Yes, under persons to be heard, did you want to make a comment on the budget?
No. Okay.
Okay. All right. So, um, yeah, I've got three people on the list for persons to be heard, and that would be items that are not related to the budget. So with that, then, we can move on in our agenda. We will be talking about the budget a little bit later on. So next, um, next, we do have Mr. Donahue, persons to be heard, and you are first on the list. So again, I'm going to give you the same instructions, approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please be respectful and as succinct as possible. Under persons to be heard, you do have three minutes, and we're here to listen and maybe answer questions.
I'm Donahue, six one one five Sunnyfield Road. I'd like to thank the city and the public works for doing a good job on the gravel road in Sunnyfield and most of the elements. They've used granite, and they've done a super job with granite, better than the red rock. They spend a little more money, but it packs just like blacktop. Now, I feel sorry for the people on Game Farm, who are gonna spend a million dollars per mile with engineering costs, and then now Halsteds, where you hired a coal mine company to build your, the road. Nobody builds roads for the first time. Now, I brought in Mark Melcher from Arlington, who's done all the work on all the roads, Lake Town Township, uh, and all the county roads in Simley County, McCloud County, and Watertown Township. I've had him bid on Sunnyfield Road and Apple Garden Road, he comes in with a reasonable to the super job. Our engineering company didn't want to hear him. I've been on three road committees, and I've asked for petrol math and other things, but the way it is now, Sunnyfield's good, after fifty-some years, it's the best it's ever been. And I'd like to see him keep using granite, I don't want blacktop, and I don't want to have ram construction, a coal mine builder build my road. And I thank Shannon for your article, it was great. And whoever did this plumbing, I don't know, I don't want him on my project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Donahue. Um, next, I have Mr. Cole begin, under persons to be heard, okay? That was for, and then I have Bill Newman, is it Newman or Nauman?
Either way.
Okay.
Sherman's saying.
Can I just ask a question? Is this regarding the Hunter's Crest development? Do you want to speak during that time?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm, you'll, you'll be given that opportunity. And then Mr. Natch, you're also here, under persons to be heard?
Yeah, I'll be brief.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Tom Natch, twelve fifty Morning View Drive. And again, I just wanted to, I got some data from the city, just want to make sure you're all aware of this, but I did ask for how much of the city's resources were spent to WSB during the last few years. And in two thousand twelve, it was four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Two thousand thirteen was a million. Two thousand fourteen, it was one million three hundred and twenty-three thousand. Two thousand fifteen, five hundred and twenty-four thousand. Two thousand sixteen, five hundred and eighty-four thousand. And to date, in two thousand seventeen, as of a few weeks ago, was eight hundred and eighty thousand. And I just wanted to encourage you to bid the services out. We haven't had an RFP on this work since two thousand four. As far as even the attorney, Kennedy and Graven, that professional service should be bid out also. They don't, couldn't even tell me last time that was bid out. And I also wanted to, I got in the packet today, you've got the billable rates, you know, for WSB, I saw here. And for the associate, the senior project manager, they're charging a hundred and forty-seven, a hundred and eighty-two bucks an hour. And I keep coming back here, you've heard this from me a couple, maybe a month ago, but I would entertain hiring your own civil engineer, you know, for a hundred, a hundred grand, a hundred and twenty most, including benefits, you could get someone, so it's fifty or sixty bucks an hour. A lot of these little projects, they could take care of themselves, and then the bigger projects, they'd be bidding it out. Right now, if you have WSB's person here, every project that goes through goes to WSB, you aren't getting competitive bids.
All right, thank you.
I like to Wolfgang the Technicolor.
Sure, thank you for your comments. Okay, um, nobody else is listed under persons to be heard? If anybody else wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, I'll give you that opportunity, but otherwise, we're gonna move on then with our agenda. And the next item is consent agenda, it's rather lengthy, so pay attention. Is there any item that anybody wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to take off item B, please.
Um, the regular meeting minutes, okay? Anything else? Okay, otherwise, we have consent agenda, item A, approve our work session meeting minutes from November twentieth, twenty seventeen. C is approve, uh, the claims. D is approve the fine, approve and finalize the twenty seventeen budgeted transfers. E is approve a designated polling, the designated polling places for the twenty eighteen state primary and state general election. F is approve variances for Donald and Christina Swenson, PID number thirty-four dash one-one-seven dash two-four dash eleven dash zero-zero-eight. G is approve a final plat for Sunnyfield Edition Two. H is approve subdivision agreement with Lake West Development LLC for Sunnyfield Edition Two. I is a res, as, uh, approve preliminary and final plat with variances for James and Linda Kutcher at thirty-nine-ten and thirty-nine-forty Farm Hill Circle. J is approve a modification of lot combination agreement for Farm Hill Second Edition. K is approve a modification of flowage and conservation easement for Farm Hill Second Edition. I is accept improvements and authorize final payment for Westwood Drive drainage improvements. And M is approve non-reimbursable legal rates increase for Kennedy and Graven beginning January one, twenty eighteen. N is approve health insurance renewal with health partners. And that concludes our consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion as may my Ms. Bruce, and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Ms. Bruce, you have regular meeting minutes?
Yes, um, Madam Mayor and Council, on page fifty-five, under the staff reports, I just like it reflected when I was discussing the St. Bonnie Fire Advisory Board meeting, that we discussed having the flow and pressure tested on the Hunter's Crest hydrants.
Yes, thank you, we did.
I can do that, but normally, that's not what the minutes are for.
Well, the reason I asked for it is because I, I specifically requested that we have a future work session on that, and I was.
Sure, yeah.
Told that that's the appropriate place to request work session agenda items.
Okay, so you want a work session agenda item?
No, she just wants it noted that she made, that she made that comment so that we don't lose sight of the fact that we want it on a future work session agenda.
Correct.
So we, we can make that comment. Do you have specific language you could recommend?
I'm just requested a, a future work session to discuss flow pressure testing on Hunter's Crest hydrants.
Okay. Did you get that, Ms. Lindquist?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other changes or additions to those minutes? Otherwise, a motion to approve?
So moved.
With those changes? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made that motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So now we move on to our public hearings, um, again, another public hearing. This is our fee schedule, it is a public hearing because it is an ordinance, and, uh, Mr. Grimm?
Yes, um, Madam Mayor and Council, um, so this starts on page one eighty-eight of the packet, and I know we had a brief discussion too on parts of the fee schedule during the work session, so, um, basically, the, the changes from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen were highlighted in, um, in your packet as far as the, the actual ordinance that starts on page one fifty-nine. There's not a whole lot of substantive changes, other than probably the ones that we talked about in the work sessions on the utility funds leading up to the final budget. That was, were on page, I think, uh, starting at one ninety-five, you know, there was some of that for the water connection trunk water charge, and then, uh, the utility rates are going up four percent. Obviously, that's sort of that phased in to pay for the water treatment plants and the, you know, the water main and all the different infrastructure related with now having treated water. Uh, the storm surface water management fee is slated to go up two dollars a quarter from twenty-four to twenty-six to help pay for all the different stormwater projects and different, you know, we're just administering that, that service to residents. Otherwise, I guess I'll probably stand for any questions, otherwise, you know, we'd be looking to, uh, I guess what, we probably, we need to have a public hearing at some point.
Yeah.
I guess we'd like to do that, so let's maybe not jump ahead here.
Well, I'll just say, if, um, council has, again, we, we talked about this at our work session, but if council has any questions at this time, we can direct them to staff.
I had, I had a question about in the stormwater, um, fund, there was a vehicle that we had talked about that was, and when I, it was a, a Bobcat that was.
That skid steer or?
A skid steer, yeah.
Loader. And the price of it was about seventy-five thousand dollars, and when I asked Mr. Peters if he had an ROI, a return on investment calculated for, he said that there were projects that we could do ourselves if we had this piece of equipment. And I asked, well, how many of those projects do we do each year, and how much do they cost, and did he have any estimate as to, to get some kind of idea of return on investment on that seventy-five thousand? And he, he said he didn't know. And I'd like to revisit that item because we haven't, I'm not saying that we don't need it, I, I trust Mr. Peters with his evaluation of what's needed, I just don't think we've evaluated the return on investment on that seventy-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, and if it belongs in the stormwater fund, because he seemed to be talking about projects that had to do with parks and had to do with road maintenance and other things that were outside the stormwater realm, so.
I think some, but I think, I think a lot, he said, was for different, uh, getting down in the ditch and doing, you know, some of those different that will help with the, the flow of the, the stormwater and whether it's, you know, even.
We, yeah, we could also, I mean, that's not to say that we have to purchase it, um, and I'm not sure that it would make a whole lot of difference on the stormwater fee, it might make a fifty cent difference, but we can also adjust those as, as we go along.
But the stormwater fee, that was the majority of the reason for the stormwater fee increase, was that piece of equipment? Yes, it was.
Well, I mean, there was that, as well as there's the other budgeted, you know, projects, so I mean, I guess, I mean, we're trying to sort of, you know, phase that in and do, you know, a couple dollars a quarter or something, we could pause and then, you know, add that back in, plus the projects, and do four dollars, you know, the next year, whatever, but, you know, we've been trying to, in, be able to have the fee be where it's, you know, needs to be to be able to start tackling some more of these.
It's currently at twenty-four dollars?
Twenty-four, yeah.
So we're talking a two dollar quarterly?
Quarterly, so eight dollars for the year, you know, so.
And I'm, I'm not talking about a two dollar quarterly fee per person, I'm talking about a seventy-five thousand dollar expenditure that I don't think we have done the work to get the return on investment to see if it's required.
And that's what I'm saying, we can determine that later. Tonight, tonight, we're looking at the fee.
Tonight, we're raising the fee to cover that purchase.
Okay, so you don't want to raise the fee?
Correct.
Okay, so what do you want to do, keep it at twenty-four?
I would like to keep it at twenty-four.
Even though there's other projects coming in that need, need funding?
I would take, if you need to increase it to do the other projects, take the seventy-five thousand dollars out, and that accounts for most of the increase, you're gonna be increasing it maybe forty cents. Mr. Grimm can figure, can do the math.
I guess, what we ran, I think we talked about it one of the previous work sessions, I mean, we, we can pause and hold the fee where it is, but what, what we're trying to guard against is for years, it was nine dollars, nine dollars, nine dollars, nine dollars. We got so far behind, we had to jump to eighteen dollars a quarter, so what we've tried to do is, is go, you know, a little bit each year to be able to cover. I mean, these mandates to reduce phosphorus and all this stuff, it isn't gonna go away. I mean, so, you know, if, if the councils, if it's their pleasure to, you know, to pause this year and not raise it, based on, I, I know we even had Gary come to one of those work sessions to talk about the value of the, of the skid steer and stuff, and I guess if it's something that still hasn't been flushed out enough, um, I, I, I'll leave it up to the council whether they want to raise it two dollars or leave it as is, but just knowing that every time you pause and don't re-raise it, you might just be putting it off for another day, so.
Well, we talked about raising it a dollar too, so, you know, maybe a compromise would be a dollar versus two.
Um, may I add in as well?
Yes.
Um, 'cause I actually brought that up. And then having further discussion with Gary, uh, had a little better understanding of why we were looking at that. It's not, first of all, let's be clear, it's not an additional purchase in that it's a replacement of an existing asset, which was, my question initially was, the asset is ten years old, eleven, coming up on eleven, doesn't make sense to replace it at this point. It will need to be replaced, and I, obviously, skid loaders don't last forever. And I was just questioning as to whether or not we could potentially delay that. Uh, Mr. Peters' presentation helped kind of get me to the point where I'm more comfortable with that, in that we are not just replacing the skid loader, we're, you know, doing what's called a track steer. So you're going from a wheeled device to a, twice it's on tracks, which allows us to do more finished work and less manual labor. And that's kind of where I think we're getting at with the return. I think he's got a valid point that it's going to be pretty difficult to go and determine every project and determine how much time you're going to save per project versus with a skid steer versus a track steer. It's a pretty tall task, and even if he did come back with a number, it'd be a best guess. So if we opt not to do that purchase this year, we're going to have to do it at some point and not too far down the line. So I guess, in summary, what I'd like to say is, I think, since I brought it up originally, I'm comfortable with what has been proposed and comfortable moving forward.
I think we could also look, I mean, we could look at, some of those costs can be distributed into other departments too. So it's not to say that it all has to come out of the stormwater fund. So. And we could, like I said, we could make, if we did that, to your point, Mr. Malater, it can be used for multiple things. So maybe a little bit of it comes out of park, a little bit it comes out of stormwater, a little bit comes out of roads, and we kind of divide that up, and rather than doing a two dollar increase, we do a dollar increase. That'll still get us there.
But it's still part of the total, right?
Correct, right, yeah.
Wouldn't make that much difference. And I agree with Mike. I think Gary did a really nice job of presenting the reason for that. Explain it well.
So are you comfortable, is everybody comfortable with a one dollar increase? It'd be twenty-five versus twenty-six?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I don't really understand why we're reducing it.
We're not reducing it. It's going from twenty-four to twenty-five.
Right, but the originally proposed two dollars and reducing it to one dollar.
Because the
The increase.
This steer, whatever it's called, I'm sorry, can be purchased, let's say, half of it is through stormwater and maybe the other half is through other departments, because it's going to be used in multiple different facets.
But it's not going to affect the grand total at all.
Right.
Well, correct.
We're spodding over a dollar.
It's robbing Peter to pay Paul.
It's also that we've got
I'm just suggesting.
It's suggestive, but now, but now the money has to come out of another area.
Correct.
Well, and
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think we've justified making the purchase. So if your pleasure is to vote for the two dollar increase, then that's fine, I'll just be voting no on that.
Sure, okay. All right, so it seems to be consensus that we leave it at the two dollars. We can discuss the skid steer later, where it comes from. So, all right, any other comments or questions on that?
We just, yeah, probably need to have the public hearing if there's no other
Yep, yep, I was waiting for Counsel to, all right. So I'm going to open the public hearing for the fee schedule for two thousand and eighteen. We're looking to adopt it this evening, and we are required to hold a public hearing for this. Is there anybody that wishes to speak or have questions or comments on the fee schedule for two thousand and eighteen? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to take it back to the Council because, one, we have to adopt the fee schedule for two thousand and eighteen, and then I would need also a resolution to approve the publication of ordinance by title and summary. So is there a motion to, or any further discussion I should ask first regarding fee schedule? Okay, hearing none then, is there a motion to approve ordinance number four fifty-two, adopting the two thousand and eighteen fee schedule as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thole and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Okay, four oh, Ms. Bruce dissenting. And then
Four one.
I'm sorry, four one, thank you. Four oh, yes, one, no. Is that clear? Okay.
I got it.
Thank you. All right, next, then I do need a motion to approve the publication of ordinance number four fifty-two by title and summary, otherwise we have to publish the entire thing.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Malater. Further question, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes five oh. So we'll move on to our business items. Now comes the approval of our budget and levy and so on, Mr.
Yep.
Grimm, okay?
Yeah, I'll take this one.
Yeah, just point in the right direction.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Counsel, this is on page two hundred of the packet. This is obviously a follow-up from the work session and the public comment discussion we just had a little earlier. The resolution is attached on page two oh one, which should be a total, our final levy for two thousand and seventeen, pay two thousand and eighteen of four million, four seventy-three, six fifty for the gross levy. As the memo states, it's about forty-five thousand lower than the preliminary levy back in September of this, of two thousand and seventeen. And then the gross levy is the four million, four seventy-three, six fifty, the net levy after fiscal disparities is added in is four million, three fifty-four, six eighty-seven. So I guess we turn it over to Counsel to, I guess, would, staff would be looking for action on this item.
Okay. Well, we've discussed it many times, again, today, a couple of times. Are there any questions, comments?
I do have a comment, and I'll be voting no on the budget for the reasons I've requested a three point five percent increase. I think that's an increase that we could provide city services to all of our residents without a cut. We can pay every employee on staff with a three point five percent increase. And for that reason, I can't support a levy increase higher than that, because I don't believe that a levy increase higher than three point five percent is necessary.
Okay, any other comments? I'll make a comment, kind of. I think staff has done an excellent job. We started out at over five percent. Actually, I think it was even seven percent that we talked about at one time. Brought it down to five point four percent for the preliminary levy. If we don't levy what we are proposing, what staff is proposing here, I disagree. We will not be able to provide the services that we should be providing to our residents. We would not be able to provide road improvements and road maintenance, and that is critical and crucial, and we can't overlook that. Yes, we can pay our employees, we can pay their health benefits, we can do that, we can do the snow plowing. But the other part of the puzzle, an important part of the puzzle, is maintaining our road infrastructure. If we don't do that today, we will be paying a lot more tomorrow. And we, as a council, need to make these hard choices and these difficult decisions. And one of them is raising taxes in order to meet those needs and looking at the long term and fiscal, being fiscal responsibility, being responsible in the long run, not just in the short term. And we know we're behind the eight ball already. We can't get behind any more than we already are. I think this is fiscally responsible. It meets the city's needs, it meets the needs of the residents, and overall, many residents won't see a significant increase, especially if their property values didn't go up. I think this is responsible, and I'm in favor of it. So, any other comments, otherwise we'll
I would like to.
Sure.
Thank you. I actually, in September, we voted for a preliminary levy increase of five point four three percent. And it would be my preference that we keep it at the preliminary level that was already approved by this council, or the majority of this council. High priorities for myself, for our residents are our infrastructure, which includes our roads, our culverts, and any of those sorts of things. In our, in our packet that we received, under culvert replacement, it says in capital letters, may need to increase. Under reditching program, may need to increase. These are items that we are making our best guess or forecast on what is going to need to be fixed, but we don't know if there may be some additional needs that arise during the year that are in a emergency type situation that we will need to fix. The other reason that I am, would prefer that we keep it at five point four three is because projected for two thousand and nineteen, the increase is five percent. Projected for two thousand and twenty is six point two four percent. Therefore, the more that we reduce the proposed, the approved preliminary levy, likely the increase for future years will be higher. But in the spirit of compromise, I am willing to accept the four point three five percent.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will just quickly say, I agree. I think the increase of the four point three eight percent is reasonable and very responsible. And Mr. Christians did bring up a great point that the growth that we have, if you figure that in, it really brings us to a flat increase or very close to that. We had increases in healthcare, we have elections going on this year, and I do think that the road improvements are something we need to have done, and it's money well spent.
Okay, all right. Mr. Malater?
Yes, one brief comment, and try not to pile on everyone else's comments here, but when I look at the overall budget, I consider it to be a very nuts and bolts budget. I don't see a lot of fluff in here, I don't see any. When you follow the news about what you see in various other government entities, this is incredibly lean, lean budget that is tangible items for the residents of the city. And if there was something in here that I thought was out of line, I certainly would be against it. But I think when we're talking about roads and ditch work and things of that nature, it's not all exciting stuff. We don't get to go, you know, ribbon cuttings for when we, you know, repave a road, but that's the kind of work that needs to be done at the city level, and therefore it's, I'm in support of it.
Okay, all right, thank you then. We'll move on, then is there a motion then to approve the two thousand and eighteen tax levy at a four point three five percent increase?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Thole. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Four ayes and one nay, Ms. Bruce dissenting. And then we move on to adopt and approve the two thousand and eighteen budgets, the general fund, the special revenue, the debt service, the CIP funds and enterprises. So.
Correct, yeah, Madam Mayor and Counsel, so this is on page two oh four in the packet, and then I'll point you to the subsequent page two oh five has basically all our different funds, our general funds, all our bond retirement, special revenue funds, our enterprise funds. And those have been brought through discussions, you know, the tax levy funds, the enterprise funds. So this is just wrapping that all into the total revenues and expenditures the city's projected to spend and receive and then spend for the different departments and funds for the year as presented on page two oh five.
Okay. Comments, question? Otherwise, adopting the final budget for two thousand and eighteen, general capital improvement, capital projects fund, debt service funds, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson made the motion and Mr. Malater seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one, Ms. Bruce, nay. Next, we have approve and adopt our updated utility financial management plan. First of all, updated financial management plan and then the utility financial plan.
Correct, Madam Mayor and Counsel, so this is more of a longer-term look, and we, as stated in the memo, we update that each year. We've been doing this since two thousand and eight to have more of a long-term look, which is included on page two oh eight in your package, at least the summary page, as well as the subsequent documents showing the actual trends, the two thousand and eighteen budget, and then the projected, you know, revenues and expenditures at a, you know, snapshot in time going forward. So I guess we'd be looking for, you know, this was brought to the November twentieth work session, and this would look to be adopted here tonight also as part of the overall budget documents for the year, so our financial plans.
Okay, are there any questions? Again, we've seen these documents and talked about them at our work sessions. Hearing none, then do I have a motion to approve the updated financial management plan?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Thole. Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four one. So then we move on, Ms. Bruce is nay. And next, it's adopt and approve our updated utility financial management plan. Mr. Grimm, again?
And then lastly, this is our annual update to the utility financial management plan. Each of these, the water, sewer, stormwater funds were brought to the Council for discussion in October and November to look at the annual budget for two thousand and eighteen, as well as obviously looking forward for, you know, infrastructure, you know, how to pay for our water treatment, you know, et cetera. All those different things are incorporated into the utility financial management plan. So those documents are pages two fifteen through two twenty-six of the packet, and we'll be looking for a motion to approve those and incorporate those also into our financial management plans to use for two thousand and eighteen and beyond, so.
Okay. Any question of staff? Is there a motion to approve the utility financial management plan or to update, I should say?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Malater and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four one, Bruce dissenting. So next, that concludes our wonderful, exciting budget and financial information. So now, I know Brian thinks it's exciting, but, and now, now we will move on to our preliminary plat for Hunter's Crest seventh addition. Okay, slightly more exciting.
I think you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a preliminary plat proposal for thirty-one lots. It's being phrased as Hunter's Crest seventh edition, located off of the property, primary property address is ninety-two hundred Towns Edge Road, and includes the property that's outlined in red on your screen above. It's about a little over nineteen acres, nineteen point two six acres, and there is about three and a half acres of wetland with it. This is the thirty watt, thirty-one lot preliminary plat subdivision that's being proposed. You're looking at an average lot size of fifteen thousand, three hundred square feet is the average lot size throughout the subdivision. The property does have some history. It was originally being proposed to be part of the master development plan for Hunter's Crest, and back in two thousand and two was actually rezoned with the rest of Hunter's Crest to plan unit development. So when the applicant came in and proposed it a subdivision, we presented the same lot and set back standards that are in the current Hunter's Crest development, and that's what they've gone and done and associated with their thirty-one lot subdivision that they're proposing here. So it's taken this amount of time to finally allow for an applicant to get into a purchase agreement with the properties that are in question here. You can see there's several different cul-de-sacs and a lot of constraining factors that hinder connectivity of the land. As you can see, there's completely, one of the street A is completely surrounded in wetlands. You have a regional trail on the south eastern portion of the property.
Can you point this out with a point of
Sure.
Thank you.
This is the wetland that I'm referring to. This is a DNR classified wetland and actually standing water, cattails, reeds within it. This is the regional trail to the southeast I'm referring to, Hunter's Trail up here on the northeastern side of the property. And then we have an existing Towns Edge Road, a gravel road that runs through to a property that is accessed, or is accessed off Towns Edge Road back here that is not currently part of development. You can see here on this plan that they do have a future subdivision concept laid out if that property were to ever develop, which gives you the ability to connect into existing street in the Hunter's Crest neighborhood. But of course, we don't know exactly how that'll look until which time that property wishes to actually subdivide. So again, many constraining factors that the developer has to deal with, given the scenario. Ideally, you'd have all the properties, but again, that's not the situation that is at hand right now, so they have to work within the constraints of what they're dealing with. Looking at the architecture, they are proposing Looking at the architecture, they are proposing the same architectural guidelines of the existing Hunter's Crest neighborhood. These are a couple of the model homes that they provided to us and is in your packet. Actually, from the planning commission meeting that was held last week, it sounds like maybe even somewhat a higher price point than the existing homes in Hunter's Crest currently, but again, they will plan on doing the same architectural guidelines, in some cases maybe a little different product than what is currently in Hunter's Crest. The planning commission did hold a public hearing last Monday. They ultimately voted unanimously to recommend approval of the 31 lot subdivision. There was a public hearing held, there was a few comments made at the comment time, but again, the commission did ultimately recommend approval of that. The applicant is in the audience if you have any questions, and staff's also available for questions as well.
Counsel, do you have any questions of staff at this point?
I do. I believe there were, if I remember correctly, as noted in the packet, there were three comments from the planning commission meeting. I didn't see any kind of summary or meeting notes on those. Could we get just a synopsis of those three comments in case the people are not here?
I can, or you can?
Go ahead, Madam.
Okay. So actually, there's one gentleman here this evening that made comments, and I told him he could make comments.
Okay.
So I'll let him speak for himself. And then there was two other ladies that commented, and one lady commented, if you can point to that wetland that's quotes unquotes "a wetland," her comment was simply that she didn't think that was a wetland. She says that her grandfather apparently used to own until this farm, and she didn't think that that was a wetland. That basically was her only comment. The other comment was...
Would have been from the lady who's living in this residence.
Yeah, okay.
Had some questions about where this road would connect. Her other question was about light, light sensitivity, light pollution, street lights.
Right, thank you.
What we do with street lights and that sort of thing.
And she just mentioned that there's some lighting that you can have that can be down directional.
Right.
And I think we already do a lot of that, don't we?
We do have some shielding, yes. And I mean, as I mentioned at the planning commission meeting, obviously, we don't want to overlight our neighborhoods. It's just purely from a public safety standpoint, intersections, places that it's necessary so that there wouldn't be an abundance of light coming in.
All right, thank you.
And those were really the only comments, and so maybe what I could do, Mr. Newman, would you like to make your comments at this point, and then, rather than secondhand?
Thank you.
You do need to state your name and address.
Bill Newman, 4593 Hunter's Trail. Madam Mayor, council, staff members. First of all, I'd just like to thank you all for your service. I know that sometimes it's quite a thankless job, so thanks to all of you for your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So comments I made, first of all, I asked if anybody knew what the average lot size was in Hunter's Crest.
You're echoing a lot. There you go, just, yeah.
I asked last week if anyone knew the average lot size of the homes in Hunter's Crest, and nobody did, and just wondering if that's been found out or...
Well, I know the density range is a little over two units per acre for the existing Hunter's Crest, the development. So I mean, it'd be very tedious to click on every lot and try to come up with an average lot size. When we look at density, we look at how many units per acre. The existing Hunter's Crest is about 2.2. What's being proposed here is 1.97 units per acre.
It's real similar.
So, lot size, I did the task of clicking on the head and counting, the surrounding 100 homes closest to it, and on average, those lot sizes were 18,400 square feet.
How much of them were wetland and how much were dry, though? I mean, that's the factor. That's why we use units per acre as a...
Well, I'm just going to stick to the square footage lot size.
Right, right.
If you click on it, it tells you what the parcel, the sizes or whatever. So really, 3,000 square feet difference, smaller lot size.
It could be, yeah.
In all of Hunter's Crest, 400 plus homes, I think, there's three dead-end cul-de-sacs.
There's seven.
No, there's more.
Dead-end cul-de-sacs. Well, I'm not including the roundabouts that have green space in them.
What's the difference?
Well, if you have a road that goes around, this is a cul-de-sac, and these are dead-end cul-de-sacs. So you, you know, I, these are similar to three or possibly four cul-de-sacs that are in Hunter's Crest.
Sure, okay.
Here's a development of 31 units, and we've got three cul-de-sacs going in them. Quick question. I meant to say, I'm not very succinct, so let me know when my three minutes is up, then I'll be quiet and sit down, okay?
And we'll try and address your questions, too, and concerns.
So lot size, the cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
Aesthetically, I don't think it fits in with the rest of Hunter's Crest. Does it matter if a new development goes across the street, if it's, this is the seventh edition of Hunter's Crest?
Right.
So I'm wondering if a new developer, that a home on the other side of the trail, are there different stipulations for a brand-new development versus a seventh edition of a development? Do you know what I'm getting at here?
Well, the property on the other side of the trail is zoned differently. There's a higher density for that development over there.
And it would look very different. It would look quite different.
Okay. It's gonna be much more dense. You're looking at eight to 10 units per acre on that side of the trail.
Okay, okay. All I'm saying is that this addition does not look at all like any of the other additions that have happened at Hunter's Crest.
And you are aware, as Mr. Abel pointed out, this is a real difficult lot. I mean, you can see the configuration is very difficult.
I do.
And so it's not gonna look exactly like Hunter's Crest, but also the council has a density requirement, and we have to meet, we have to meet that density requirement, and they're actually just barely at that density requirement. So the other thing to keep in mind is most of these lots are gonna be facing a wetland, so their lots are gonna seem a lot larger. Right now, you're looking at lines on a map, so that might make them look, you know, feel smaller, but I think in reality, they're gonna feel or look larger because they just are gonna blend into the wetland area. So from that perspective, I think that they'll fit in in terms of lot size. And the cul-de-sacs, cities don't like cul-de-sacs. I mean, they're expensive to maintain, so I don't think we differ there. The problem with this is we can't get the density without these cul-de-sacs. I even talked to staff and said, is there any way we can do a through street where that first cul-de-sac is versus a cul-de-sac? Because of the other property not coming online, we can't do anything. I mean, it's just, it's, we're so tied in terms of what we can do. That's unfortunate, but...
And then the only other, is the shared driveways. Is there four or are there three homes that share?
Three.
Three?
And we'll talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, that's just...
Sure.
I mean, has that ever been allowed in any development, a shared driveway?
Yes, we have some. Sunnyfield has a few. And we've used them, especially when there's wetlands involved and you're constricted because of the wetlands, and so that you don't impact the wetlands as much. So in Sunnyfield, I know that that was the case. We have two or three shared driveway situations. I know one for sure is a three-home shared driveway. So it does happen, we'd prefer not, but sometimes it has to.
And then last week, one of the planning commission members, I think, I said aesthetically, it just, I did, it doesn't look good.
I know, I understand, yeah.
And somebody had said that we can't make a decision based on aesthetics, and I would argue that you didn't put the water tower on out lot D because strictly for aesthetic purposes.
Well, no, we didn't. We didn't put it there because the residents didn't want it there. Correction. Sure, okay.
But thank you again for your...
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if anything else can be done differently, but...
I know, that's the problem with this. It's very tight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And appreciate your comments, too, by the way, Mr. Newman. All right. Any other comments from the public? Yes? I'm sorry, behind you. He's not the public, he's the developer.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Luke Moss. My family owns the triangular part of the property that is in question right now.
Okay.
And I appreciate all the work that everybody has done on this staff, and I'm not here to complain about anything, but I just want to show you this picture. This is the first generation of people that were born in the house that's currently there right now.
Mr. Moss, you're talking about the property that's not being developed?
No, what is being developed.
Okay.
Where the two cul-de-sacs are.
Yes, okay.
And down to the vertical, the vers of them. And this wouldn't have probably even occurred to us, except that someone from the city called my sister several years back and asked if it would be okay if we named Lyle Park, or you named Lyle Park for my family, and that didn't happen, obviously.
We didn't, I didn't know about that, okay.
But, and I don't know why. I mean, I lived in Texas and different places.
Okay.
But I hope that you might give some consideration to naming one of the streets or the cul-de-sacs, if this still exists at that time, after my parents' alias, Theda Moss, T-H-E-B-A. You won't see that too often.
Okay.
And that's all I wanted to ask you.
Okay.
Thank you for all the work you've done.
Well, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Moss, can I get your address, please, your current address?
Oh, sure. 308 Dearborn Court, E. Diana, 55343.
Thank you very much.
So that would then dovetail into Mr. Tom, last name, please help.
Tom Bachrige.
Thank you. So this gentleman, Mr. Moss's request is that, that would be kinda nice.
Well, I have no objection to that.
Okay.
Let me introduce myself first.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Tom Bachrige with Homestead Partners, JMS Custom Homes. Also in the audience is Rick Osberg, our engineer, project engineer as well. JMS Custom Homes, you may know, has been around 33 years. We're a developer, we're a builder. We build in a lot of the northwest, west, southwest, and southeast suburbs. Staff has done a great job explaining the history, talking about the constraints, and there are constraints here as mentioned. The two properties that are under contract, everybody knows, is 15.72 net acres, which is 1.97 units per acre, as we talked about. As presented by staff, there's 31 single-family lots. The average size is 15,307. It ranges from 12,000 to 26,200 across the board there. In regards to the 31 lots, there's six lookout lots, there's six rambler lots, and 19 are walkout lots. In regards to the issues here, as everybody knows, we have constraints to this property, which is the wetlands. Also with the wetland delineation that just came out of the report, we lost about 60 feet of property, what is known as the peninsula property. At one point in time, the cul-de-sac was pushed a little bit further southwest, but because now we're pinched, we lost land, we're not able to have that anymore. So that's where the private street comes in. It's not uncommon. We will have an HOA in this neighborhood, like the whole Hunter's Crest neighborhood has, and those three property owners will be responsible for that as well, for maintaining that.
So there'll be documented easements across each lot?
Correct. That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Because what I'm thinking is, should the HOA ever dissolve, let's just say they were to dissolve, then we would want some kind of legal means to force them, if you will, to maintain that road.
They'll be recorded as well on their deeds.
Okay, thank you.
As your city resolutions are recorded, they'll be on their deeds. So if you have any other specific questions I could answer, I surely can do that for you.
Mr. Malliter?
Sure. On the cul-de-sac that serves the private, or the shared driveways, so this is kind of an eye test here, but I think it's lot number 19 there, the smallest one on the cul-de-sac. Is it possible that you could bring the cul-de-sac to the end, flip the bubble down, and increase the size of lot 19, but subsequently reduce the size of lot 21, so that we would eliminate the need for that shared driveway?
Not true.
Okay. Can I get a pointer or something?
Yeah.
So how do I, oh, here we go. All right. So what I'm saying is, this lot right here is pretty small, partly because of this cul-de-sac. What I'm saying is, if we brought this cul-de-sac down, and rather than having it bubble up like this, bubble down like this, that would allow this lot to get bigger, but this lot would be smaller, and you'd get rid of the shared driveway. Is that feasible?
We tried that.
And what happens?
But we, there's no, we can't meet the setbacks.
Yeah.
We can't meet the front and rear setbacks. We have buffer setbacks also with the wetlands. We can't meet those setbacks.
Okay, so if we, okay, good to know, thanks. If we were to, how far off are we on the setbacks in those cases? Because what I'm thinking is that if we variance that and allowed that, you would be able to get rid of the shared driveway?
I'm not requesting a variance as part of...
No, I understand that. And what I'm saying is that, when I look at this and say, one way we could fix this is bring that to the end, the proposal would change such that you would ask for a variance. We would grant the variance to accommodate that, and the trade-off, the public, or the trade-off that we get is we wouldn't have a shared driveway anymore.
One of the problems that we run into, if I could, it's a DNR wetland, and so there's different rules and restrictions, more restrictive rules for DNR wetlands than there are for other wetlands. And since it's a designated DNR wetland, again, you have more restrictions.
But I still need to know how much of a setback we'd need to do.
Plus, we have a storm, excuse me, Madam.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
We also have a stormwater obligation that we have to meet on that property.
Right.
So we need enough storage to be able to do that, and that's where it's all happening, is right there.
David, could you point that? Oh, you don't have a pointer? Oh, okay.
There's stormwater, there's a pond in here.
Oh, there is?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's designed, size-wise, based on the modeling and the runoff that's been done?
Right, I understand.
I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish. Wouldn't that just make the second from the end lot smaller?
Well, I think it'd be a trade-off in the two, I'm not really looking at lot sizes. I'm saying, overall, I think the lot sizes would be the same. One would get bigger, one would get smaller, but what it would allow is allow us to get rid of the private, or the, you know, just private shared driveway.
Right, right. But I think for the whole bunch of extra, it might not be worth it.
I disagree, but...
Well...
You'll see it on the drainage utility plan here, and you'll see the contours that are next to the wetland, why it can't be moved.
Okay. David will pull it up.
I believe it's 2.2. Why Dave is fine.
Right.
There's... You can see the constraints that we have here, Mr. Malliter. And buffer requirements that we need to keep on the north and south side. Everything that's shaded are buffer requirements from the DNR wetland, as well as the new wetland buffer requirements off the wetland to the south.
So what you're saying is that this is the buffer right here, this line?
Yes.
Okay.
See, the only way to do it, Mr. Malliter, is if that cul-de-sac were much smaller, but that's not feasible for plowing. See, that's, the cul-de-sac meets our city standards.
Well, it doesn't meet our city standards, actually. This new city standard is the cul-de-sac that Mr. Newman was referring to. That was your confusion, Mr. Newman, on the cul-de-sacs? Is the new city standard cul-de-sacs actually kind of look like a roundabout, but they're not...
You have green space.
Yes, correct. So none of these, none of these are, these three are true city standards. Now, I do get what you're saying, though, in that they're standard in there.
They are city standards. They are city standards, maybe, hold on a second.
They're meeting the same standards that were put forth for Hunter's Crest. It's zone, PUD, so we have the ability to deviate from the, from the road standards.
Right, right, I, I get that.
If you took the PID out of, element out of it, and you wanted to use the new standard, it's the teardrop.
Right, right, the teardrop, right.
No, that takes up even more space.
Well, I, I get that, yes, so that's not feasible, and that's, but that was kind of the confusion on the, before the comment.
Sure.
Okay, so...
It, it's been looked at every which way, that's the...
Well, I, I haven't had a chance to look at it my way, and I'd like to do that right now, so...
If you have a chance, Mr. Molliter, to go to the property?
I've, I've been out there.
And just stand there, the views, and these are gonna be wonderful lots.
No, I, I've been there, we've, we've looked at this lot for a number of reasons before.
Bear with us here, just a second. Sure. Right. Yeah.
Well, I, it, are we still, okay, moving beyond this particular topic.
Okay.
There was also a section in the packet about a lift station being necessary.
Right.
Um, and it looks like that lift station is only necessary because we're not getting cooperation about putting in a gravity system.
Right.
I understand we need lift stations in the city because of topography, that's just the way it is. I have one down the street from me. I don't have a problem with cases like that. But lift stations, as we know, are not only expensive for, to be built, which I understand is the developer's responsibility, but they're also very expensive to maintain.
Correct.
Uh, and so we're going, we, as a city, are going to be taking on an extra expense to maintain a lift station only because we can't reach an agreement for what is physically possible.
It's not us that has to reach agreement, and the developer...
Us has to take the expense.
Sure. And the developer has tried, and there's two properties, I don't know if you're aware, Mr. Abel, if you could just point out, there's two properties that they would need, um, easements from. Um, I don't disagree, and I think the developer would agree too, they'd rather see a gravity. I mean, by far. But, um, it, both of, is it Lutki? Is that, uh, Lutki owners, as well as Mr. Newman, who owns that other little piece, have not come to the, have been willing to come to the table?
Sorry, I never got an offer for an easement. I got an offer for a land purchase, but...
Okay.
Easement was never, asked me time, but I never got one.
Okay. Exactly, it might be moot, and that's maybe why, um, because it's the Lutki property, it's, it's such a miniscule amount. But if they're not willing to give it, our hands are tied. And if you, maybe, if you could just show the teeny tiny little, maybe...
Yeah, I can see it right there.
That's the Lutki property, and that's what has, has to go under, and they won't give the easement.
We've been trying for, Madam Mayor, excuse me, we've been trying for over a year, just to obtain that corner. To buy the corner, place easements there, and they're not willing to sell or work out an agreement. And without, without that corner piece, you can't extend the utilities, it does no benefit.
Maybe put it overhead, no, just kidding.
No, but it, it just seems like, I don't know what a lift station costs, I know, well, actually...
They're estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. So even if you, and I don't know what that costs versus straight line, gravity line, but even if you took, I can't imagine, okay, well...
Yeah.
If, if you offered them, I don't know what you're offering for price, but it would seem like that would be a subject that money could solve.
You would think so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure that the developer, put it this way, the, I agree with you, it, and I think the developer agrees to, it, it would be better all around for everybody if it was a gravity, no doubt. Um, so the, the resolution could be to continue to work with the property owners to see if they can come to a resolution. However, if the event, in the event where they're ready to start building, and they have to move forward, they would have that option. Another question I might have for either yours or our engineering firm, if we do the lift station now, and eventually, who knows, maybe fifteen years from now, maybe twenty, who knows, maybe never, should the Lutki property come into play, would it be possible to remove the lift station and then have a gra, uh, connect it to a gravity?
Yeah, right now, the location of the lift station is going to be in the northeast corner of Outlot, is that Outlot A?
Yeah.
Is where that would be. So it would be kind of on the opposite end of where you would want the gravity sewer to be.
Okay.
It's an ideal location, it's out of the way, um, and it's downstream, which is what you try to do without increasing costs. If you put a lift station at a high point, your cost goes up for structure and the depth of constructing sewer. Um, I would say that that, if the Lutki property does develop, it would go to the gravity system to the north and northwest. And that's already stubbed in there for that.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? So, yeah, we're not excited about the three driveways, shared driveways, but, um, if we, we have to meet the density, unfortunately. So I'm sure that the developer would love to do two wonderful large lots out there, if he could. So...
Oh, I did have one other question. I believe in the packet, there was still some unresolved question, or maybe this resolved at this point, about wetland, as to whether or not the requirement's gonna be made on-site or done by purchasing bank?
Mitigation?
Yes, mitigation, sorry.
Yeah, right now, we're looking at purchasing bank. We have no room to go on site.
They have, yeah.
There is no room.
How, how many square feet or acres are there?
Right now, we're negotiating with the watershed.
Okay, so you don't know exactly how much?
On, on Outlot A, we think that's an incidental wetland. And right now, the watershed is reviewing that con, our concept and our proposal. And I think they're in favor so far, but we have to demonstrate the modeling of it.
So is that Outlot A, is that all wetland?
A portion of it is wetland and then stormwater.
Yeah.
Bonding.
Okay.
That's required for the development.
Anything else, David?
No.
Okay. All right, any other comments?
No, but thank you very much. We're ready to come into your city and bring some new residents in.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any other questions?
Just one more comment.
Okay.
I mean, it's important stuff.
Sure, absolutely.
We have, I think as a council, if this goes through, we have to give more urgency to the water tower issue, because we're gonna add thirty-one more homes to servicing.
Well, okay, and, uh, Mr. Newman brought that up at the Planning Commission meeting, so, uh, one, just for clarification, we're aware that there is a water pressure issue for fire flow. However, water towers are for fire flow, not necessarily so much for capacity. Currently, we have enough capacity for the homes that are there, plus the thirty-one, but it's the fire flow issue that we really need to address. And I have been talking with staff, we're looking at different options there. We'll be bringing some ideas forward next year for that. So we wanna get it done sooner than later. And I think Ms. Bruce would agree, the fire people, the fire department in St. Bonnie also agrees, we need to do something, so... Good comments. So, Mr. Abel, you are looking for, um, preliminary plan approval for Hunter's Crest Seven Edition with all of the attached, um, recommendations by staff?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I, I just, okay, I have one more question, real quick, and this is maybe for Mr. Beatty. So, um, is there anything that we can do so the tree preservation, um, so this, this development is gonna have to pay into our tree fund or environmental fund, can that be used in the park for park improvements?
Madam Mayor, Council, I haven't looked at the language lately. I know that when we originally talked about it, we talked about trees on public property. So certainly, that would be something you could use in the park. We also talked about environmental enhancement. I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, or if you're talking about capital equipment in the park.
Improving the park.
Well, and that's my question, how do you mean improving it? I mean, I think what we're, we were thinking of, the council's intent, was green things, not, um, structures, and so...
Okay, we'll have to look at that, anyway. All right, just a question. All right, with that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and that is with staff's recommendations and conditions, okay? Any further question, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And that was made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Bruce. So with that, um, those conclude our business items, and we'll move on to administrative items, our staff reports?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, Council, I've got a few things to discuss, not too long of a list, though. I was able to attend the Mount Fire Commission on November twenty-first. Councilmember Thol, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bruce was there as well. I know Mayor Whalen was unable to make the, the meeting. Um, I put all the materials that we received from that, uh, meeting in your information packet, if you'd like to look at it. Um, also, I'm, I'm trying to find the date here, last Wednesday, twenty-seven?
Wednesday, yep.
Yep, take a guess there.
Twenty-ninth?
Yeah, we'll go with the twenty-ninth. Twenty-first is a day and a week after that, so... Um, we attended the Metro Cities Meeting, held in Brooklyn Park. They had a presentation, um, from their executive director, Dave Unmott, and he introduced their new CIO, Mel Reader. It's a female, even though she goes by Mel. And they just talked about partnering as, uh, in the future with cities. There were sort of remarks made by the, my council chair, Eileen Churimoff, she was there to talk a little bit. We took a break, and then we had a presentation from Lester Bagley, who's the Vice President of Public Affairs and Stadium Development for the Minnesota Vikings, and he talked about a couple things. One, he talked about the upcoming Super Bowl, which is virtually weeks away. And then he talked about their ongoing construction in Eagan of their new, um, corporate headquarters, so to speak. So, and what that's gonna bring to the area. And then, then we adjourned the meeting. Um, just as a reminder, this is our only meeting, and here in December, we will meet next on Tuesday, January second. We're off on the first for the New Year's holiday. And then, I hope everyone has a great holiday season with family and friends.
Thank you.
I think that's all we got, I don't know if anybody else has got anything?
Nothing else by staff, okay? Um, then council reports, we'll start with Ms. Bruce.
I attended the Mount Fire meeting, and as Mike said, it's all attached in the information packet, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Molliter?
Uh, nothing at this point, LMCD will be next Wednesday, and that's the only one for the month as well.
Okay.
Uh, WCC meeting is next week as well.
Okay.
Uh, nothing to report, other than to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season.
Thank you. As Mr. Bruni pointed out, I did attend the Metro Cities LMC Conference, and, uh, one of the, um, roundtable discussions, which I found very interesting, was, um, the barriers for people filing for municipal office. And, um, is very, the discussion was very interesting, and a lot of barriers were, um, were talked about. And not just at our table, um, was, this was a room of like, over three hundred, um, elected and appointed officials, officials such as, as city administrators, and interesting. And then they, um, so that was very interesting. And, uh, then I also attended the Planning Commission meeting, so, um, that was very fun. It's always fun to see our planning commissioners. We will be making, uh, Planning Commission and Park Commission appointments at our first meeting in January. And, um, I think, and then, who will be attending? Do you need somebody to attend the Park Commission meeting in January? Because that would be coming up pretty...
We'll have a meeting, we can still decide, you know, we still have the council meeting before, and, um...
Who's attending that one?
We, nobody, I don't have anybody yet, but we do have time. We still have, we can, the first council meeting, we can decide, if you'd like.
Oh, okay, but there's no Park Commission meeting in December?
No.
Okay, no Park Commission meeting in December, January, we will have one, and that's the second Tuesday.
Yep, yep.
So it's a week after we come back, so... Think about your schedules, if you can attend. I think I can attend. I think so, okay. All right, so with that, um, I too would like to wish all of my fellow council members, and our staff, and all of you out there, um, a very happy holiday, safe and happy holiday. And again, um, thank you, staff, for a fabulous year. Great, great job, you've been wonderful to work with. I really appreciate all your hard work, each and every one of you. You do good job every single day, so thank you very much. Uh, pleasure and an honor to work with you, as well as all of you. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
And, well, we have to adjourn the regular meeting, right?
Yep. So...
Okay, sorry.
Madam Mayor, and...
I have to cancel the request for adjournment, okay?
Luckily, nobody seconded it, so... What, what, uh, staff is recommending is that the next item involves something that the council may close the meeting to discuss. It has to do with an evaluation of an employee. So the appropriate, uh, thing to do would be someone to make a motion and second, and for you to vote on a motion to go into closed session to consider that matter. And then typically, after that discussion, you would come out of closed session, go back into regular session, and presumably adjourn at that point, because I think you're done at that point.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then is there a motion to, uh, to go into closed session?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Morton, seconded by Ms. Bruce, to go into closed session, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section thirteen D-dash-five, um, to evaluate the performance of a city employee. All those in favor...
And we, Madam Mayor, excuse me, we should identify the employee in the motion.
Okay, and that employee is Glenn Ring, I mean, Glenn Ring, is that okay to add to your motion?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, thank you. So it would be to evaluate the performance of Mr. Glenn Ring. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And we will take a two-minute break and allow everyone to leave that is not involved in the closed session.